This is one place where we're high, and that's because we had to pay fees for our computer software for support. And that comes all in one. You can't designate it and separate it out over a 12-month period. It comes in one lump fee. So that's the big thing. Ask any question here that comes up. So on page seven, you have the police department. Police department is at 49.8 percent of what we budgeted for them. So they're right on for six months. Then we got the municipal court. It's 49.7 percent. So they're right on target. Fire and EMS at 51.6. So they're hanging right in there. And one thing I'd like to point out to you, if you'll go back to page one, down near the bottom under user fees, the heading of user fees and the ambulance services, the ambulance services are at 56 percent. So that's of what we budgeted. So that's, I think, looks well for our ambulance services and our redoing the billing service that they are working with and some increase in fees. And they're staying busy, too. Building department, they're at 49.1 percent. So they're right on target. Then we get down to the street on page 11. In the street department, the revenues are at 34.8 percent. But here again, as I pointed out in my summary for the end of May for you, a large part of that will be property taxes or some of it will be property taxes. And that doesn't typically come in until October. And then again, our sales tax revenue, that's allocated to the street. Department is two months in arrears just like the other. That's our reasoning behind that. Down on our street expenses on page 13, total expenditures are at 43.2 percent for street. So considering that, all the things that we've had come along like trees and stuff that had to be removed from streets and so forth because of the wind or whatever. Then the LOFIE, which is local police and fire retirement, we're right on target at 51.2 percent on the revenues and 6.6 percent on the expenditures. And the differences there was in the past, the state had some investments that we were participating in, the revenues. And those investments, when interest rates dropped and so forth, we don't get that turn back from the state like we're doing still. So that's the cause for the discrepancy. General fund capital, we're typically under. We have had some capital expenditures, but anyway, we're in pretty good shape on our Same with our debt service funds. We're in good shape on those. Capital project funds, we've had very little expenses out. And okay, there. Court automation fund, which is something that's mandated by, as I understand, by the Supreme Court, and it's fine money and some of the funds that go into that, okay there. Municipal court retirement, it's there on a different retirement system than the other city employees. We're all right on that. Down at 80, we get into water and sewer. Water and Sewer on page 27, we're at 68.1 percent of what we budgeted. The expenses, we're still running okay on that. Personnel costs are at 50.6 percent. The other costs are at 46.9 percent. And we've got some in capital expenditures, not a lot, but a little bit. Water and Sewer, we're still, as I told you before, we had some invoices that we were not aware of that came in that we had to pay. And so we're still, even though that pushed us up a little bit, we're still okay on the water and sewer, what we've got coming in and what we've spent thus far.
Where does that show that? What page are you on? Twenty-nine?
Yeah, it comes on down to page 29.
At the top of 29, it says Fund 85 Water and Sewer. And then yet the headings down the side are transit. I'm confused.
Well,
Something happened?
It would appear that somehow this new computer program that we've had for the last 12 years slipped a gear there somewhere.
Okay.
And so
It's really the transit.
Fund 85.
Thank you. Just mis-titled, okay.
Yeah. I don't know, quite frankly, that's the first time I noticed that.
It says Fund 85 at the top of the, Fund 85 Water and Sewer at the top of page 29.
Yeah, it says Fund 85, but 85 is
See, I've got 85.
See, because you go to page 28 and it says Fund 80 Water and Sewer. So it was just a little, but yeah, we got it.
But 85 is transit.
Thank you.
But if we come down, of course, transit, a lot of their funds, expenses are reimbursed by the state and puts that file for every year. We'll come down to the end of the report.
Page 32? Oh, the end of this big report, okay.
Yeah, end of the big report. Well, go to page, everybody go to page 60. That's the last page.
Page 59.
In summary, huh?
Yeah, let's jump to the end.
Now it's getting warm in here. He turns the fan off.
Transit fund again showed up.
Yeah, but down at the end here, says transit fund, but down here at the very end on the totals, while we've got we've got revenues so far this year over expenditures of $4,008, well, we're under $4,857 according to our month-to-date budget. And that's just this month, we're up, we had revenues over expenditures of $34,439. $34,439 for the year, we're down $4,857.
If we consistently somehow spend everything we make, how are we ever going to have a plan to work on the infrastructure of the water and the sewer unless we come up with a way to build into our budget and allocate funds and start chipping away at, maybe have Dwayne or somebody come up with a 10- or 15-year plan that breaks it down and then start working on that? How are we ever going to take on infrastructure issues other than begging for grants, which we know doesn't work so well?
Well, some of the things that I'll have to get for you, like, is we make transfers to reserves every month for capital expenditures, capital projects fund, depreciation fund. So, and those are showing up as expenditures, but they're actually transfers to these capital or these reserve funds, okay?
Okay.
So we're not spending everything every month that we get.
So there, then there's no report in here on these reserve funds?
Uh, there's not a total on them, no.
That's not that contingency emergency fund? That's a different one? Okay. So somewhere we have this little bank account of reserve funds that could be tapped for that project, those projects?
Right. We have about 30 some odd bank accounts that we
Thirty?
exile and have every month that we deal with.
But we, but we don't, but we as a council don't see those accounts?
This is not, this is not a balance sheet.
No, I understand. Okay.
Budget report showing what we have budgeted and what we have taken in, what we've spent.
Yeah, I understand. This is the operating budgets. I understand that. So there's, okay. Do we ever see that? And I don't remember it.
I don't recall having produced one since I've been here.
It would sure be nice to help us as we start prioritizing projects if we know what's there for infrastructure. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Just a little one. Workers' compensation insurance, has that gone up? We didn't, they didn't warn us at the time it was going to go up.
Uh, yeah, it typically goes up.
Yeah, I know, it normally does.
And we have to pay it all in one lump sum.
Right. Okay. Yeah, because I noticed on every single one it had gone up a smidge. Not a lot, but each one had gone up, so, each department.
We allocated it out according to payroll to the different departments.
Okay, thank you.
What do you, Ms. Ober?
I have a question. Well, mainly about pension funds because they've been in the news so much lately, concerned Detroit. Do we have many people that are ready to retire? And what shape is our pension fund in? Are we funded? And do, are we going to have adequate money to pay these pensions? What, financially, is our pension fund healthy?
Okay, as, we have a kind of an unusual situation here in that we have a, we don't have a pension fund for all employees unless they want to participate. It's like a 401K. It's a 457B plan. And it's with Valley. And if they put in so much money, then the city will match with so much money. And so those, like I say, it's a government or municipal version of a 401K plan. So we only have, I think, about 12 or 15 people who participate.
Okay.
Because it comes out as a payroll deduction. And then I can't remember for sure what the match is, but it's like 3 percent or so.
Okay.
Five percent? So now, the uniformed fire and police, that's where the LOFIE comes in, and that's by state law.
Yeah.
We don't have an option there. And that's all handled with the state. We make the contributions, they invest the money.
That you said was running a deficit?
Uh, the, some of the, some of the money that we in the past have gotten and as contributions back from the investments to help with our contributions, we don't get anymore. The funds themselves, I don't think are in the deficit because the state legislature really, really watches those LOFIE funds very, very, very closely.
Okay.
Then the, then the municipal court. And those employees, they're in a different retirement fund. And those are solid, too. I mean, we just make contributions to them.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You're out here looking back at the water and sewer disguised as municipal court retirement.
Oh, yeah.
It, the water, the water revenue
What page are you on?
Uh, 26. Water revenues from water sales and sewer fees is down quite a bit. That reflects from last year. So that reflects quite a bit of the income. Has Dwayne made any reference to that as to why? Or is that, again, is that, are these consistent? That's, I don't know if this is consistent with the last few years. Well, I know it's not last year because it's down pretty significantly.
Well, it's at 42.8 percent, the total revenues. And so that's probably because we hadn't hit the dry season yet and the irrigation meters hadn't been utilized a whole lot.
Well, for that much difference, and most, most people that water their yards significantly have a separate meter with no sewer fee anyway. So, I don't know, that's just kind of
But then again
I'm not saying that they're necessarily extremely severe, but they're, they're pretty high. That total revenue through that, through that area there is, is, you know, from last year is, what, 70 grand difference? From 597 to 529. And utility revenues?
Water sales here versus water sales here, there's a difference.
Well, you've got, yeah, you've got that. But I'm talking about, in this total, you've got 70 grand, right at 68, you know, if you want to get technical.
Well, just, if you look back at last year, 110-degree weather with a drought and we're not facing that this year, that could be that 10 percent. And I'm sure we had extraordinary usage last year.
I don't, I haven't
Dwayne hasn't
Yeah, there's no alarms or anything.
Well, we're always running short with all the problems that we have. And we have to put money in from, borrow money, so to speak, from the general fund. And then it'll come back in and so forth because the water, the water runs about 30 days behind, actually, from the time it's read, the meter's read, till it's built, till we actually collect the money. And so you've got a delay there, but the only explanation that I can, that I have for it is that we haven't had as dry weather this year and people haven't turned on their irrigation meter.
Oh, they're not filling the pools as much and that kind of thing. That might be significant. I mean, yeah, your motel, I mean, because of the evaporation factor, let's be it, that would be, that would be a big user. But I don't know, it's a pretty significant number.
Yes, sir.
So how I follow along with that, Mr. McClung, and what you mentioned earlier, could that also be related to perhaps, you know, 5 percent downturn in our visitors here and usage in hotels using water and sewer? I'm just saying, I don't know. I mean, that could possibly be a portion of that as well as the weather.
Well, that's always a possibility. However, everything that I have seen has shown that that, the indicators that we look at, that does not seem to be the case. But it, I mean, it always, obviously could be. But when we look at, of course, sales tax is too much behind, you know, what we've collected. But comparing it to last year, we're still up a little over what we were last year. I think I sent that out to you all in an email, maybe.
That may not be the case, then, yeah.
And from the CAPC collections, and Mayor, correct me if I'm, and Terry, you would know this, too, being on Mr. DeVito, are they down?
A little bit.
So, and those are, those CAPC collections are pretty much right on, you know, I don't just know. So I suppose it's possible, but the indicators are not there.
I can't, can't remember if this is CAPC or council. Had we agreed to do a quarterly review, am I correct in that? So we're going to be revisiting this again in September, thinking of the CAPC. I think we, council decided a quarterly review.
Quarterly, I think, is, and especially since we're coming into the last six months of the year, I think that we really need to stay on top of all of this. And so I would, I would encourage, even if it wasn't here, I would encourage us to do that because of it being the last six months. And of course, we get down toward the end, you know, we may have to do it more than just a quarter. We may want to do it, you know, November 30th or something. Mayor, if I could have
Go ahead.
Oh, I answered your question.
I just want, I wanted a little bit of explanation on, from my mind, on the items that put us over budget there for water and sewer, Fund 80. I think you mentioned it, but page, if that's 27, we're over budget 68. We're at 68 percent at this point in the year. And you mentioned there were some items that were
Go ahead, some engineering fees and some things that somehow got kind of lost in the shuffle. And we were behind, oh, I don't know, several thousand dollars on those. They had not really called it to our attention, the engineering company. And so then, when it did come to our attention, we started trying to get caught up on those. And, but honestly, we in the finance department had not seen them, so we had to try to make allowances for that. And that was the big issue.
Okay. So this was outstanding engineering invoice, it wasn't brought to your attention, it was probably delivered at one point in time. And just being an engineer, I kind of know what it might have happened. It got lost and was never paid and they never followed up until a couple of months later.
Right. And the plus fact that, you know, we've had problems down at the sewer plant and stuff. That's primarily the issues, as I understand.
When are we starting the 2014 budget process?
We'll start that probably around the 1st of November. And we are required by state law to have it to you all, you all being the council, by December 1st.
And we have to approve it by what date?
January 31st.
So we have two months to review it and go over it. And you have the process
December 31st, isn't it?
For their approval?
No. January 31st.
No, no, no. I would say we get it to them by December 31st.
December, December 1st.
1st? Okay, I thought it was 31st.
Because we have
Must be thinking about something else.
We've got a lot of stuff happening right in there and it's obviously a big push to get
So
Yes, forget what I said.
So basically, department heads have one month to do their departmental budget and get it to you, and you review it and get it in format? Kind of? Are they working on it now? Or, I mean, that's a short
I would say they probably are. I know they're, they're tracking where they are on this budget very, very carefully.
So pretty much then, if they only have a month to do it in, then they're pretty much doing historical-based budgeting, not zero-based budgeting? They're just taking what they ran and inflating by 2% or 3% for inflation and going ahead and hoping the revenue's there to match it?
No. No, that's not the way that, that's been presented to me.
Just checking.
It's not the way it's been presented to me
All right.
by all departments, for that matter. They, I'm not, I'm not saying that they don't use some of their historical numbers, but
As they should.
But that's not the foundation for, for the budget.
But their operating expenses and all are all based on justification of each line item?
That's what I understand, yes.
That's what you expect?
That's what I expect.
Okay.
And if we don't, if we think it doesn't look right, well, then we go back and redo it. Ask them to redo it.
Any other questions?
I, Mayor, if I had, if I could just have a couple more minutes. I know ours is getting late. But I had told you all in an email that I would have some suggestions on water sewer rates for you. And I'm working on those. I don't have all the data that I'd need to make any suggestions whether to stay where we are, whether we need to increase or whatever. But I've been doing a lot of, giving a lot of thought to our, as you alluded to earlier, our long-range plans and where we need to go and what we need to do on our infrastructure and so forth. And thus far, I have not seen a comprehensive, progressive plan that outlines what we need to do, what targets we need to try to hit, what the costs are going to be. And I was wondering if it would be within the council's purview here at some point to have workshops or subcommittees or whatever to try to help Dwayne, and I've been involved in it also, I'm sure, come up with some kind of a plan with target days. And I don't know how, everybody keeps talking about, we need to do something about infrastructure. But I have no earthly idea of what kind of money we're talking about. You know, I don't know if we're talking about a million dollars. I don't know if we're talking about $5 million. I don't have any earthly idea. So I would like to see some kind of a plan put together and some numbers that I can work with because there may be some ways that we can start doing some of the things the things that we need to do if we have a plan, if we have some targets, and if I know how much money that we're going to need and what kind of timeframe they're going to need it in. So, I just throw that out there. Right now, I'm just kind of waving, you know, yeah, I agree, and I don't have the expertise to do that, so, I'll just throw it out for consideration.
Mr. Weaver.
I think we're kind of moving in that direction, albeit slow, but I, I thought that's the way government was supposed to work. That's a joke, by the way. We've established a, somewhat of a priority list. Part of what the town hall meeting on the 19th is going to get citizen input as to what they feel priorities are, and I would feel better after we engage the citizenry as to what they feel are their important topics, that, that we would finalize some type of a wish list, priorities list, and then allocate a number to that. So, we're kind of moving in that direction.
Well, I say that because, you know, Dwayne, he is so, uh, he, he is so covered up with trying to solve the everyday, day-by-day problems and he, it's impossible for one person, even in his position with his knowledge, to, to, I think, to come up with what I'm suggesting. I don't disagree with what you're saying, Mr. DeVito, at all, but, but let's get some kind of a plan in place and try to, wise man once told me, plan your work and then work your plan.
Mr. McLaughlin.
I'd like to address that, Lonnie. We're, uh, we're actively pursuing that right now, and in fact, Dwayne has, and I've seen his spreadsheet, uh, he's had the help of a local engineering firm to develop order of magnitude costs for some of the, larger infrastructure issues. Now, those are in the, uh, several million dollars each, you know, we're talking about sewer, we're talking about, uh, water distribution, we're talking about streets and drainage. Uh, and what we're trying to do by having this town, our meeting, our town hall meeting, is to elicit, uh, some comments from the, from the public, but also to inform them and, and sort of indicate that we're trying to hone down and zero in and help, um, identify these, these areas that we, we could really help. And, and I think it's very interesting and, and very encouraging to hear you say that if, if we had a priorities list, that, uh, let's start looking at it from a financial perspective and, and identify some of these and, and, you know, we may not be able to do a $10 million sewer project, but we might be able to identify some of the worst sections. Uh, we might be able to, you know, work on things like, I won't belabor the issues, but things like identifying our leakage in, in our water distribution system, um, and, and some of the other areas that we need to really focus on. So, appreciate you bringing that forward. We're working towards that goal.
I just, I just want to say that I don't need to be critical of anyone or anybody. I hope nobody took it that way, but I'd like, I'd like for us to have some, I need some, I ain't got money.
Mr. Mitchell Weaver.
Not to belabor the point, because we have, but I definitely, and we're, we're doing the priorities and one of those priorities is infrastructure, there is no doubt, and it wouldn't surprise me at all if the public doesn't have it within the top three. It would be amazing, but that's quite possible. But it's for sure one thing, this council needs to develop in conjunction with the finance department and public works, a very workable and active plan that lays out the infrastructure process and divides it into whatever pieces that it needs to be done and so that that roadmap is available not only for the rest of the term of this council, but the council after it and the council after it, instead of kicking this can down the road. It's been kicked down enough.
There is?
It's like what we're trying to accomplish at the CAPC, and that's develop a five-year plan and a 10-year plan and prioritize those and work toward that and allocate resources to that and be aware of the reserves and if the possibility exists to be tapping into that, so, uh, yeah, hopefully within 90 days, we can have something like that.
Anybody else? Okay, nothing else on this, and we'll close this and move to item number two, North Main Parking Lot Restaurant.
Move to discuss. Second.
There is, each member got a packet last time, uh, from Mr. Berry, which is the entire plan on the, on the North Main Restaurants. Uh, I hope, did everybody have time to look at it, go through it?
Everything you ever wanted to know about a restaurant.
Everything you wanted to know. Uh, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability. If not, next time we have Mr. Berry here to answer questions about the particulars. Uh, what I would like to ask the council if, I know, to do a, Mr. McLaughlin...
Are, are you ready for bids on or no?
I don't think he's got them, each one of these, I think he had, said he has to stamp the final edition and it still has to be approved by the Arkansas Department of Health, because it is a public restroom. And as far as the council goes, uh, consider, we're going to have to do bids on it, there's no doubt about that, because I don't think they're going to waive, waiving on it. And my, my understanding, it's going to run between 40 and 50. We tried to cut some corners the best we could, but I think that's why it's going to wind up being between 40 and 50 grand. Uh, and that's pretty much it. Yes, sir.
And that money is coming from where?
Lonnie can best explain that. He is, uh, he is the money man down on that end.
All that reserve funds you got stashed away, I know it.
It's a little bitty bust, Lonnie. It's no big deal.
No, it's a, uh, it was just a little excess that... I prepared the budget that I kind of stuck over to the side and, uh, for, uh, a little bit of a project or two, and this is one of the, the main projects and so...
It was budgeted.
So, I've got it covered.
Thank you.
Good. Yes, sir.
How many more of those little squirreled away? That's why he brought that up tonight. We need to, we need him on our team.
That was actually on the agenda, yeah, that was on the agenda from last time.
You just have to know how to ask.
Yes, he got it. So, uh, aside from Mr. Berry getting his finalization on, on the two issues that we just discussed, I hope the council would take it upon themselves to consider this maybe for next time, an ordinance to put it out for bids, because I think all the details of the, of the drawings are done. I think he just has to stamp them and...
Give you that authority tonight to move?
It'll have to be, it'll have to be an ordinance to, uh, go into the bid process, put it out for bids, is that correct, Mr. Weaver?
I'll have to review it, but you're probably right, yes.
Yeah.
Have a motion now?
Even, even to waive it, you would have to put it in an ordinance, I believe.
Yeah, can, can we give you a motion to, to draft the ordinance?
Uh, you can, you can direct Mr. Weaver to do so, should, if you're to that stage now, I want you to make, make sure you're very comfortable with what you're looking at, what's present before you. Yes, sir.
I don't think we have to have an ordinance for it. I think we, we can, I think you can have a bid, both to accept or reject. I don't think it takes an ordinance.
It would waive, it would necessarily otherwise.
Hey, there, there's my way, buddy.
Well, we've already decided that we're going, we would have to bid on this.
Uh, yeah, I feel pretty sure you will have to go out for bids, unless you waive the bid, which I doubt you want to do.
Then I, I, I suggest we wait until these are final and you bring them forward and we, and you, you know, we'll approve to have them go out for the bid.
I will stay on Mr. Berry to get the finalization and see where, what status he is.
Okay.
And then the other part of my discussion on this will come under Mayor's comments, so. I'll tell you what, where it's about to happen, it won't cost the city anything. It's free, volunteer. Uh, moves this on to number three, land bank, Mr. Levine. We need a motion to discuss in a second.
Second.
Floor is open.
Good evening, everyone, or almost good morning.
Dick, dig.
Uh, I just, uh, I, this is something that there's probably too much to it to really have any hopes of discussing it completely tonight, but I just wanted to give you an idea of what the philosophy is behind this. This came up in 2011 and, uh, so the sense of urgency you can see isn't great, but, uh, the philosophy of this is that when the city who has all these separate little bitty pieces of property and some of them are truly small and they're truly out of the way, uh, and if the city should decide to sell these, which are, they probably should, or we probably should, then there should be some kind of mechanism so that the city does not lose property. So, if you create a land bank, this allows us to, to put the money in a fund that will be used for land and for land only. And, um, it's not an, uh, an original idea, it's done all over the country. Uh, and I think another aspect of it is that if somebody who is a springs enthusiast or they want to see recharge areas around the springs or they're trails enthusiast or they're just a city enthusiast who wants to see the money put to good works, we may be able to get donations into this fund as opposed to being in the general fund. It'll be its own dedicated account for land purchase and land only. It's not meant by any means for if the city decides to, uh, sell a fairly substantial piece of property or expensive piece of property, that, that's not an intent to go in here. That's a separate transaction. But, uh, we did find that the city owns 320 acres of streets in what's mostly the historic district, and it's unusual that a city has been deeded these streets, but we have a document signed by, I think it was Chester Arthur, uh, in 1896, who said so, that we have deet, that we don't have a traditional title to these streets, but we have a document saying that it has been given to the city. So, we have those, uh, parcels here and there that we can, uh, when we do dispose of, we hope that we can put that money in a land bank. And then, uh, the other thing that may be confusing, uh, is in section 10, and it took me a while to remember what it was that we had in our minds in 2011. It says, "Any additional financial contributions made by the Parks and Recreation Commission to the land bank may be reimbursed from the land bank account." And, uh, a good example of that is up at the, uh, the Artist Colony at the intersection of Mill Hollow and Main. The city owns several lots and Parks purchased three lots on its own and made that a complete block. So, the city now owns an entire parking area, uh, that's there and it was made complete by funds that Parks, uh, expended to buy that. So, there may be a case where, uh, Parks may want to get out ahead of the curve if there's something, we have a piece of property that's next to magnetic, that is absolutely vital to, uh, uh, that whole spring property, uh, and, uh, it goes on and off, on and off for sale, and it's one of those things where I don't know if we're going to have the time to go through a lot of different mechanisms to, uh, to purchase it, so that may be a, an isolated case. But, uh, pretty much that's it. Yes, sir.
Bruce, are you thinking, uh, that Parks would have automatic control of this fund?
No, uh, the land bank committee, uh, will be, and there's several people on it, and it makes it hard to read because everybody has Eureka Springs, Arkansas in front of it. It's got, uh, the director of parks, a council person, uh, a public works, uh, a parks commissioner. We waited a little bit, but in, in the final judgment, and I'll defer to Mr. Weaver, I think the city can nix about anything. This is just a screening process that goes to the city and then there's another level of scrutiny that goes over it.
Why, the director of finance, our, our city money person, isn't in there anywhere?
Uh, at the time, it wasn't thought of. We could put that in there.
I'm not trying to give him another job, but...
Yeah. No, we could easily amend that, absolutely.
All money controlled.
I don't think we had one at the time.
I don't think this is going to be a real high-volume committee that is going to meet constantly. I think it's just going to be on a case-by-case, and then we bring that to the city council and the council has the final say on, on any of it, really. So, it's a, it's more of a screening process than anything, at least the way I see it. Now, Mr. Weaver may look at it differently, or maybe he hasn't looked at it.
We keep talking about 2011, two years ago. Didn't we start this like four years ago or something?
Maybe it was. I, I may be wrong. I think it went through a reading.
I was on the council before.
Yeah, we were on council when we first, I thought it was a done deal and we were good to go.
No, nothing ever happened.
No. Okay. Because I know we worked on it together.
Well, then it's been longer than... Madam Clerk, was there a, is there a date on that one? Do you, you recollect?
It's probably 2009, 2010.
Something like that.
140 was read one time in 2011.
Okay, but I think it was discussed before that.
Yeah, okay. I thought we finished. Well, it's got a number, so we had to finish something.
So, if there are any other questions, then we can maybe discuss this more at length at the next meeting.
Earlier?
Yes, please.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Probably need a motion to leave it on the agenda by.
So moved. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moves this on to number four, uh, resolution moratorium on business license for tours.
Make a motion to give it a number and read it.
Second.
Okay. Need a, need a motion to discuss?
No, that wouldn't...
Okay.
Yeah, whatever it is.
Okay, everybody's getting punchy now.
So, you're making a motion to discuss?
Yes, and give it a number. That's a genuine number first, I don't know.
Good for you. Keep it up, please.
Okay. Did we get a second on it? Motion to discuss?
So moved.
Okay, thank you.
That's...
All right. All in favor of the reso, all right, signing a resolution number?
Please.
See, I'm getting, I'm getting there too, yeah.
I thought we were discussing almost too much going on tonight. So, uh, is there a motion to...
Okay, there's a motion to assign a number and...
Correct.
Approve on the first reading.
Yeah. Why does the number first? Are we supposed to do a number first or discuss first?
We wouldn't do both since it's in the same motion.
Assign a number and, um, I have a question, procedural question. If we assign a number and discuss it, when does it get read and if it's read, is it passed?
We would actually assign the number when you're going to read it, and you probably in the motion to read it should either say for approval or to be approved by another vote.
What he said.
So, which would you prefer?
I want to give, I want to give it a number and read it and approve it.
For approval?
Right for approval.
So, we're assigning a number and reading for approval?
I'll second that one.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, stand by.
I didn't bring coffee.
Yes, the resolution number will be 622.
Have you read it?
That'd be lovely.
Resolution number 622, resolution establishing a moratorium on the issuance of new business license 85.3, tour guide service and 84 tour vehicles. Whereas the city council of the city Eureka Springs, Arkansas is in the process of reviewing the use of business license category 85.3 and 84. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city Eureka Springs, Arkansas that the city clerk is hereby directed to neither accept any new applications for nor issue any business license category 85.3, tour guide service or category 84 tour vehicles for a period of 90 days, ending on October the 20th, 2013.
Make a motion to accept.
It's a, it's a done deal. It's a, it's a done deal.
Oh, it's done, that's right, it's a resolution.
All right, ordinance. Okay, moves us on to agenda setting, Mr. DeVito.
Uh, I guess we didn't say to leave the restrooms on the agenda, so I'll move that the, the North Main Parking Lot Restrooms be added to the agenda.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Anything else, Mr. DeVito?
No, sir.
Mr. McClung.
Now, before we go further, wait a minute. Didn't we, were we going to re-discuss or reread or something the resolution that the council did against SWEPCO, since it apparently wasn't clear?
No, no.
It wasn't discussed any time during this meeting.
You can do it.
Do we, can we add that to the agenda real quick, since we've already done it?
You can add it to the next agenda.
We can't do it tonight?
Who are you? No, to the setting discussion, for next agenda.
Said before we go further, good grief.
Well, we've already started, yes. Mr. McClung?
Nothing.
Mr. Mitchell?
No, sir.
Mr. Perkypal?
Uh, yes, Black Bass Am, website.
Second it.
The website?
Uh, well, Black Bass Am, that's one through the website.
Mr. Snyder?
Okay, like to add the resolution, re, to reread the resolution we already did on SWEPCO? I'm looking at the attorney. Don't, we already did a res, write a resolution?
What's the purpose of rereading it?
Well, because obviously, it isn't clear.
To a couple people.
Well, regardless, so can we just take two seconds and reread that resolution as performed on whatever date it was?
Council votes on it.
If you get a second.
I mean, it's okay to do that.
You can legally revisit the issue, but...
Okay, well, I would like to add it on it, just to reread, because if there's people confused, including a newspaper man, I would, I don't think five seconds of our time is going to hurt anything, in view of what it entails.
I'll, oh, God.
Thank God, it's five seconds.
I will second it, just to clear it up.
Thank you. Good Lord.
You've made a second it, yes, sir.
Five seconds.
What we need is a resolution opposing all routes for SWEPCO towers. That's what she was asking for. Now, the resolution that we said does that, okay, but if that doesn't do that, then we need a new resolution.
Need to talk to the city attorney.
And I don't have a copy of one.
So, how do we put this on the agenda, then? Just discussing it?
It's on there.
To revisit it, and if we need to tweak it, we can?
So, it was made a second it, so it's on.
Who was the second on the resolution opposing all routes?
Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
Ms. Eller?
No, that's, that's all I have.
Council comments, Mr. DeVito.
No, uh, council comments. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody who turned out for the spaghetti dinner. We served 162 people and raised about $2,600 for Save the Ozarks. And I applaud the people who turned out en masse for that event. Thank you.
Mr. McClung?
Uh, just a reminder for people that, uh, to plan ahead for August 19th with, for the town hall meeting, uh, we hope to have a good turnout and, and really set some direction for the city, and that's also a reminder, because all our department heads will be there, too, so they need to be reminded of all that.
Yeah, we need to discuss it, too. Uh, I don't think it was ever clear to me that they all be there. Uh, I think I should have been asked about it, for them to be there, because I don't think the council has the authority to make them be there. Now, with that said, I don't want it to be a shooting gallery in my department heads, because me and the city council and the finance director should be the ones fielding the questions, not the department heads. Y'all can ask them, I don't have a problem with that. But if it's the general public, going to throw, going to start throwing darts, then I'll pull them.
Personally, I never thought, I never, that thought never entered my mind.
You didn't go to the last two meetings that we went to.
That never entered my mind at all.
Yeah, and that's just from experience, okay. Uh, and I'm on cover for my department heads, so it's my job.
That's fine.
If y'all want it, here.
They're not going to be tied to any weapon posts of mine, as far as I'm concerned. That was...
Well, yeah, but you, you won't be, you won't be throwing the questions. The, uh, public will be throwing questions. At them. Does that make sense to y'all? I mean, do you understand my position on this?
Yeah.
They weren't there.
I think the questions were going to be filled ahead of time, weren't they, were they not?
I don't think...
Regardless.
Precept questions.
Regardless.
Okay. So, I'm, I just want to cover, I just want to cover my department heads.
It's the 19th.
Because...
Politeness will be the key word.
They're obligated to me to answer the questions.
The other thing is that, again, just, I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that, uh, that Ms. Foster resigned from the CA PC.
Yes.
Thanks for her service, and we need commissioners. We've got two holes there to fill, so, uh, step up the plate, please.
May I ask a question? Which slots are open?
Those two.
One is restaurant, and is there?
They're not specifically designated, but we don't have, we won't have any restaurant representatives on the CA PC.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mitchell, you're up next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mitchell, you're up.
No, I'll pass.
It's not, uh, let's see. Mr. Perkypal?
Uh, yeah. I'd just like to say thanks to Chris at Public Works for dealing with a sewer issue that was a city's problem, and he and the crew went out there, took care of it, swabbed it, the basement out, and, and the homeowner was just, uh, very, very appreciative. Thanks, guys.
Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody who showed up a week ago for the, uh, public hearing. It's, in my opinion, really a shame that the judge that heard everybody here for two days isn't going to be the deciding factor. She really seemed to get it. Um, the people pulling together was, was really awesome, and it is times like this that I really appreciate living here, because we can be cat and dog, fighting, stabbing each other, and something like this comes up, and we're right there together. I, I really, really thought it was great. I would like to admonish our citizens at the same time, though. Please, when we do have public hearings, when we do have community meetings, when we're trying to figure stuff out, let's keep it polite. Obviously, there's going to be two sides. Let's keep it polite. Thank you.
Ms. Eller?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, moves it to me. Uh, in conjunction with the North Main restroom issue that we just talked about here, um, on or about the 27th of this month, I had already, had already informed y'all that the folks from Warren, Arkansas are coming up here to meet with a church group from, from Kansas to do volunteer work within our city. And they're going to, they're going to work on the North Main Parking Lot, where the restroom is going to go. They'll be divvied out in different places, uh, that I've designated for them to clean up, and that means trash, and brush, and trees, and, uh, and a few other things. So, uh, and it's not costing us anything. The local churches are going to be picking up their places, staying, feeding them, and plus whatever they do themselves. So, we will have a group of volunteers in town doing exactly what we've been discussing that we needed done, for free. So, that's, that's one issue. Uh, I don't think we've had a city council meeting since our last issue regarding the Spring Street closing. Have you? Have we had a council meeting since then? I don't think we have.
We haven't discussed it at all.
Okay. What I would like to say and, and reiterate the same thing Ms. Snyder says is when we have these meetings, don't come there and be nasty. Uh, come there, and Ms. Snyder was at the same meeting, I was, and I think Ms. Eller was also. Uh, the folks that tried to be polite and just make a point were, were sneered at and, and just, just treated really nasty, just, and it was unnecessary. They couldn't be heard what they had to say, because everybody else was right and they were wrong. So, just, just give everybody a chance to say what they have to say. Uh, if you can do it at the, at this meeting that, that Ms. Snyder talked about, then you can do it at the other meetings where it has stuff to do with the city directly. Now, uh, I've got a list of stuff here I want to read. These are activities. July the 26th to the 28th, summertime in the Ozarks. July the 30th is, uh, is it Altius? Altius? String Quartet at the auditorium at 7 o'clock. July the 31st is blood drive into Ozarks from 1:00 to 6:00 P.M. August the 2nd through the 3rd is big yard sales. August the 2nd through the 4th is diversity weekend. August the 8th is John Michael Talbot, 7:30 P.M. at the auditorium. August the night through the 11th, Eureka Springs Multi-Sport Festival, better known as Eureka, will be held in Eureka Springs. I don't have anything else that I can think of. Is there anything that we missed? Uh, we'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?